Anybody else recording? Let us know. Okay, so all rise and pleasure.
To the reply of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Here.
Charlotte Crane?
Here.
Dr. Everwin?
Here.
Todd Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Ellen LaDazori?
Here.
Elizabeth Lonsbury?
Here.
John Mason?
Here.
Stephen Morantz?
Here.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Here.
Rich Peters?
Here.
Robert Ronzio? Mr. Stewart? Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Here.
All right, we have a forum. So first up is the public hearing and fiscal new 26 budget.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. We are presenting to you the tentative budget this evening. We presented the tentative budget last time we met. This evening, we will be voting on the tentative budget.
Just a public hearing.
A public hearing, I'm sorry. This is the public hearing. And I will say, not a whole lot has changed since the last one. There were some discussions, and we will point those out in our presentation. In terms of our goals, again, the goals have not changed. It is sort of an ongoing balance to ensure that we're providing excellence in education, and we're also being fiscally responsive to our towns. We want to make sure all students feel like they truly belong in our district, that we're meeting all their academic needs, their social, emotional needs, and we're also, at the same time, being cognizant of our fiscal responsibility to our seven member towns.
So this slide has not changed since our meeting last. This is our year-over-year increase of all funds. We see, we're seeing a 2.7% increase or a variance of $963,000. So our gross tentative budget is $36,643,001. This is another slide that has not changed. These are our year-over-year increases and decreases in our expenditures. Our salaries will be on a separate slide. Some of the big items here that we're seeing increases this year are our health and dental insurance, as we've talked about it a lot. Our active health insurance is going up 16%. Our retirees are going up 20%, or they did go up 20% in January. And then our dental's going up 3%. Another large increase this year is our transportation costs for special ed students. We are increasing that line item by $135,000. That is to meet our expenses this current year. So I'm sure they're going to be higher next year, but we're just trying to get to this year. Just trying to get to that. We are seeing some increases in our supplies and utilities, but the big bucket there is our utilities. We're seeing $32,000. I think everybody's seen that across everywhere. Some of our large decreases in the operating budget. One is our Dan and principal interest. We've talked about that a lot. That is not going away. It's just being moved to the capital. Very hopeful it's going out for permanent bond to the share of the project, but it's being moved out of operating and into the capital budget. Finance also decided to decrease our OPEP trust amount. We have been putting $400,000 in. This upcoming year, we'll be putting $50,000, so it did decrease by $350,000. We are seeing a decrease in our special ed out-of-district tuition. That is mainly due to students aging out, so they are no longer under the districts, so those bills will be just going away. So for our expenses outside of salaries, we are seeing a 1.18% increase or just under $200,000.
This shows, this slide shows our operating increases and decreases. The additional staff, just to be clear, this is, these are staff members that we've had within our schools this past year. The difference is they were approved after the budget season last year, so we've included them as additions. A school adjustment counselor, .5 at Wacona High School, .5 at Crainville, a Bridges teacher at, and this is a teacher that meets some of the more specialized needs in literacy at the middle school. Just to mention that $30,000 of that position is funded by the Taconic Foundation. We are very appreciative of that. A district-wide L teacher, .5, and that's to make sure that we're meeting the state mandated services for our students. A CES special, Crainville Special Education Teacher, 1.0, again, that's ensuring that we're meeting all of our service needs for students with disabilities. Paraprofessional, 2.2, again, that is ensuring that we're meeting their IUP needs for those students. Other increases, we've increased, increased the substitute line increase, and we've put in a line item for contractual increases, which is pretty standard in our budgets. Decreases, the title and tutor at Wacona Regional High School is a decrease. The instructional coach at the high school is a decrease. An admin assistant at Nescus is a decrease. And three classroom teachers, that's a decrease, but just to clarify, those are retirements that we are not replacing. Reallocations, so we are reallocating a special education teacher at the high school. They will become a student support coordinator. That means they will be supporting students in a support center at Wacona High School, primarily for those students that are struggling with behavioral infractions during the day and throughout the day. A science teacher will be full-time from Wacona to Nescus. Right now, that science teacher is being shared between Wacona and Nescus. A classroom teacher will become an ELA interventionist to be shared between Beckett-Washington and Kittredge. And an ELA teacher at Wacona Regional High School will become a .5 interventionist. Again, this is budget neutral, but it's a reallocation of resources when we look at scheduling and efficiencies.
So these are some of the changes from the initial budget, not from our last meeting, but because we are, most of the time, we're looking at how things have changed from last year, but this is just where we changed it from January. We had to increase our health insurance line because we saw a 16% increase instead of 15. But we also saw some decreases, and most of these came out of the finance subcommittee in order to help with the budget. So one is we are budgeting for two less buses this year. We normally budget for 25, we'll be budgeting for 23 next year. The OPEP trust, which we spoke about. And then also, our property equipment improvement plans, that's our peak plans. We have one for capital projects, but we also, our technology is part of that as well. So our computer renewal cycle, that has been removed from the budget. Also, some of our actual peak lines and field maintenance that we added in. This just shows you a five-year snapshot of our FTEs that were budgeted. One thing I do like to note when we look at this, so if you're looking at FY25, we did add some FTEs after the budget last year, so over the summer and in January. They are not included in this data. This is just budget-to-budget. But year-over-year, we are seeing a small decrease, so from 276.3 to 276. This is one of the things, has, one of the changes since the tentative presentation a couple weeks ago. So these are our budget offsets and our salary items. These are our grants and our revolving accounts. So the committee did decide to decrease what we were expecting to use next, or what we were expecting to get next year in rural aid in FY26. So that number in the green section for the rural aid line, it now shows $1.2 million instead of the 1.5 million, I believe it was. But overall, we do have offsets in our grants and in our revolving accounts totaling just about $3.5 million. The only other place where we have offsets in grant funds or revolving funds is our circuit breaker and rural aid. So we do have some circuit breaker money. That is the state reimbursement for special ed costs. We do have $600,000 that we're using next year to offset our tuition for special ed placements. We are also prepaying this year some expenses in special ed tuition and some technology items with our FY25 rural aid. So that's just over $300,000. So when you take that first number we saw a couple slides ago, the $36 million, subtract all our offsets, that gets us to our operating, which we need the towns and the budget, and the district through local funds on Easter, come up with, it's a $32 million number, which is a 4% increase year-over-year. And that brings us to our revenue projections through state aid or our local revenue. The big thing that changed on this since our last meeting is the town assessments. So the state, the top portion is our state aid. We talked about that last time, but state, the chapter 70, we're seeing a small increase of about 2.2%. And our chapter 71, which is our state aid for transportation reimbursement, we're seeing, we're expecting to see a large increase, about 9%. But once you take all these other revenue sources, everything else falls to the town assessments, and currently, they're seeing a 3.97% increase year-over-year. So how the towns are individually apportioned, we, for the operating budget, is a five-year average. So this just shows you what the five years look for, look like in each of the towns. This also shows our school choice numbers on the right-hand side, so you can kind of see what it's looked like the past five years. But these numbers are then used on this sheet to show the individual towns' increases in their town assessments. So the average is 3.97, but they do range from a Covington at negative 2.6 to Peru at an 8.2 currently. These increases are mainly affected because of the required local contribution. That is set by the state. The small remaining over that is what the budget balance is, what that percentage is used for. The last piece of the puzzle for the budget for the district is our capital budget. This is seeing an increase this year. It's also seeing a decrease that's being offset because the Beckett-Washington project's now off the books. But the Wacona building project's seeing an increase, so there are towns seeing increases and decreases higher than they normally would, but it's a just under $300,000 increase. This slide shows the six-year averages of our town assessments and our overall expenses, just to kind of see what it's looked like, where the district's been and where we're kind of heading. Over the last six years, our overall expense increases has grown about 24%, and our town assessments have grown about, just under 16%. The one thing to note is during this period, that's when we did see a lot of investor funds and rural aid come in, so that is part of the story that's happening here. So that is our budget. I know this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions or comments.
Is there anybody online that has a question?
In the chat line? No, nothing here. And I can go back to any slides if anybody wants to.
No questions from the, from here? How about the audience? If they'd like to speak in the audience?
Yeah, actually, I do have a question. It's a very simple question. Has anything changed from the last time we had a budget meeting? Because I know there was a lot of positive things that were said in regard to making sure that the budget did meet our students' needs, and that there was a turnaround of a feeling of, we think about numbers a lot, and I'm a math teacher. I think about numbers most of the time. But then there started to be, well, these are students that we're actually talking about, and there seemed to be a wave of change in the air of it. And I even got feedback from educators in Central Berkshire regarding feeling the same way that maybe there's some hope, that there's going to be a bit more for our students. So I'm not sure if I've heard that here tonight.
So nothing has changed yet. So normally, nothing doesn't change, or nothing changes from the tentative to this point, but finance is meeting next week for the final budget, so there could be changes at that point. I'm not saying there will be, but that's when changes would happen.
Okay. And I just want to say thank you, because I signed up to speak, but I just wanted to say thank you for everyone's hard work and this, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Next up is the student report, and Daniel's here. Phil, say, Daniel.
Well, NHS has been planning a babysitting night for kindergarten to fifth grade for March 28th. We had a state champion, Wes Duse, for wrestling. He's moving on to all states. The girls' basketball has a round of 32 tomorrow night, and the boys' basketball has a round of 32 Saturday night for states. Spring sports meetings have begun. I had a track meeting yesterday, so everything's starting to get moving again. Green Umbrella is going to an elementary school to read books to those kids. I don't know when that date is, but I know it's very soon. The hockey season unfortunately just ended with a heartbreaking end to it. The Nordic state champ, Fritz Sanders, is going to Nationals in Utah, so that's huge for him. And we had a civility assembly today that was great from Black Legacy Project. That was a lot of fun. They sang and educated us, and it was, it was a good one. I got to stand up and dance along with it, clap, so it was a lot of fun. We've been in kind of a lull going into spring sports, so as spring sports start up, we'll have more going on.
Excellent. Next thing. Any questions, Verdi? Okay. So next up is financial report. We had several warrants that were previously signed, and gifts and donations. We have, the first one, acceptance of a donation to Kittredge Elementary School.
It is resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the following donation from O'Connor Studio totaling $1,155.07, as recommended by the president.
Second?
Motion in second. Any questions on this? Hearing not seen, then. Have to do a roll call vote.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen LaDazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Morantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Robert Ronzio?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Next up is the secretary's report, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 13, 2025. Can I get a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Roll call vote, or any discussion, any questions on that, changes? Seeing not seen, then. Roll call vote.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen LaDazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Morantz?
Stay.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Robert Ronzio?
Upstaying.
Mr. Stu, Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Upstaying.
Motion carries. Okay, next up is the report chair, or the superintendent's report.
Okay, so I don't have a lot this evening just to follow up on budget. I wanted to let everyone know that I did follow up with the towns again, and let them know that I am available to come to their select board meetings or their finance subcommittee meetings along with Greg Bueno. I will be going to Windsor on Monday, as yet I haven't heard back. Other thing I wanted to mention is that both at the middle and the high school, we are partnering with Kids Place. We typically, in the past, partnered with a DA's office in Pittsfield, and we will be doing internet safety and cyberbullying training for the, and education for our students, which we think is really important. We've been working toward that for a while. Next steps, I think, would be to sort of bring that down to the upper elementary schools. And then the last thing is, we had a really great day on Wednesday, bringing a core group of all of you on visits to our schools. I so appreciate, it's a hard time to be able to get out, but I appreciated the teachers that welcomed us, the administrators, all staff that welcomed us, and the core group of all of you that rode along on the bus with us. It was actually a lot of fun, and I don't know if anyone else wants to speak about that, but that's really all I have for you tonight.
I'll just add, I went on that trip, and it was, it was exceptional. We really do have a pretty amazing district, amazing teachers, admin, and student population. It was my first time actually getting the full tour of Wacona, and I just was blown away by how advanced it seems, and how quiet it was, and how respectful everybody. It was just amazing. Significantly impressed, so.
Thank you.
Questions? I would have liked to have gone, but I was very busy.
I would just also like to add, it was just, it was really amazing to see in every classroom that we went into, no matter what, you know, age it was, the kids were so excited about learning whatever we were kind of walking into. They were excited about math. They were excited about, like, we're doing like these deep dive mysteries and research. It was just really cool to see kids be excited to learn. And, you know, some of them, they had no idea we were coming, and it was just like, and they still, they were excited to show us. So it was really, it was really a pleasant surprise to see how, you know, motivational our educators are.
Cool. Thank you. All right, report of the chair. The only thing on here is the dates for the town meetings, and we still don't have, don't know about Washington. And I will, I have placed the report on, but they're in personnel, so please do it. Next up is the report of the subcommittees. So first up is curriculum. Ellen?
Good evening, everybody. Curriculum met just past Tuesday on Zoom at 7:00 PM. We had a discussion about winter benchmarking, or what they call middle-of-the-year benchmarking, to measure progress, to see how students have done against themselves, and how our standards-based instruction has been, is going along this year. And it gives the teachers a chance to catch gaps in learning before year-end assessments. Again, for universal screening, we use Amplify. It was given universally from K through 6, but not in grade 7. We only did targeted assessments for those students still having difficulty. It was also kind of hard, it was a really bad year for illness, so some of the grades didn't complete their assessments, or are still, are going to be completing their assessments next week. So it wasn't, we didn't really have a full breadth of data, but elementary school, we were pretty good. So in ELA, it looks like from where we were in the beginning of the year benchmarking, kindergarten made grade strides back at Washington, going from meeting or exceeding expectation from 44% to 55. Crainville was from 38 to 52. Kittredge, 59% to 67. First grade was, kids made grade strides, again, back at Washington. 100% of their student population are now meeting or exceeding expectations in first grade of ELA. Crainville went to 68% and Kittredge to 65. Or went, actually, Kittredge, they went down from 72% to 65%. They seem, there seems to be an issue with how foundations are being, our foundations is being used in, from classroom to classroom in the first grade, so they're looking into that and seeing how they can make it more consistent and support all students. Second grade, again, everyone did really well. Most kids are, and up to third grade, did really well. Back at Washington, 66 to 80%. Kittredge stayed around 85%. Crainville went down slightly from 73 to 69%, but there are some, and they're digging deeper into this, there are, the at-risk kids are not the same as they were in the beginning of the year, so they're trying to see what's going on and which kids need better supports. Problem, again, third grade was really good. Kittredge, we did notice that they went from 61% at the beginning of the year down to 39%. The growth in at-risk students here, they need more and better interventions. There seem, there could be some problems with the curriculum implementation in the third grade, so more investigation needs to be done, but, and see what supports are needed. Fourth grade, they did okay. Back at Washington, at 84%. Crainville stayed around just under 50%. Kittredge now is about 60%. The third grade, this fourth grade class at Crainville, this one has, is still one of the only grades that has three sessions, and there's about 24 kids per class, and a lot of these kids are high-needs kids. Not necessarily behaviorally, but they need a lot of supports, and it's really hard for the teachers to do that when class sizes are pretty much at their max. And then fifth grade, not really a lot of growth there, so they're looking to see what kind of supports are needed. Typically, at this point in the year, you're hoping that kids are meeting about 60 to 65% of their, of the educational goals. Although Kittredge, they did go from 51% to 67%, but that was the grade that we were worried about last year with MCAS, but now they're split into two classes. Still have a lot of high-needs kids, but each class now has 16 kids instead of one big class there. So that seemed, but, so that seems to be working out, and hopefully, I mean, would be great if we could supply another teacher to make the, for that class coming up in Crainville, so we can, when they get to fifth grade, it could be four classrooms instead of three. Math, all grades are about 75% or better. It's, they're just, everyone's just doing great. And sixth, and then in math, from grade 6 to 8, they didn't really do any assessments because all kids were already at around 70%. And so the target, so they were just target testing those kids who were still having issues and needed some support. Edulastics, for benchmarking, applies the skills or, to see how kids are understanding and reading and really digging into and applying their foundations to, for reading. Then, so grades, everybody seems to be, this seems to be moving along nicely, but again, middle school was not graded, assessments are not complete or just completed. Everyone seems to be moving towards the 60% level, which is relatively indicative of where we will land at our MCAS grades at the end of the year. And then high school is not giving yet. Then, so next steps right now are how, figuring out how the teachers are using class time to target areas of concern, monitoring and adding interventions as needed at Crainville, Nescus, and design plans for Kittredge. Does anybody have any questions about winter benchmarking right now? Or where the kids are, and comments from the meeting? We were going to talk about approval for, our recommendation to approve the Costa Rica trip for 2026, but the paperwork was not in yet to the district, so we will be moving that to our March meeting. And then the next topic we talked about was the 2025-2026 school calendar. So shall I read the motion first and then discuss? It is resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the 2025-26 school year calendar as presented.
Second?
Only things, I mean, the calendar basically stayed the same. We did remove any reference to religious holidays in the calendar, so you'll now see winter break, spring holiday, that kind of thing. And then if everything goes according to plan, last day of school is going to be June 11th, and winter break this year, because of the way the holidays fall, go from, well, kids will go back to school Monday, January 5th, because January 2nd is a Friday, and bringing kids back to school for one day for the week just is not productive.
Okay. Any discussion on the calendar? Questions? I think Juneteenth, it says E in it, Juneteenth, but I could be wrong. Does it have an E in it? Yeah. Corrections.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody online? No questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Kraftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwin?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen LaDazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsbury?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Rich Peters?
Yes.
Robert Ronzio?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so our next meeting is scheduled for March 19th on Zoom at 7:00 PM. Our topics for discussion will be the Costa Rica trip if the paperwork is in then. We'll also get an update on the science at ELA piloting at Mesecus and Wakona, and we will go over graduation competency requirements in lieu of MCAS.
Okay. Thank you. Nice report. Good work. All right, picks up his policy.
Finance?
I'm sorry, finance.
Well, mine's easy. We haven't met since the last school committee meeting, but our next meeting is scheduled for March 6th. It will be 11:00 AM remote, and it will be for the fiscal year 2026 final budget.
Okay. Now, Paul.
We also have not met since the last committee meeting, but our next meeting is March 11th, 7, at 6:30, excuse me, here at Mesecus.
Okay. Picks up his personnel. We had, we've been very busy. Last night, we had our orientation for the superintendent search and got into that work, and it went really well. And next week, we have the interviews with the candidates that the search, the search committee passed through for next week. So we have several interviews slated for next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so. And at that point, what will happen is, at the end of the interviews, and the committee will decide on which ones to pass through for the full school committee, and we'll have to have a special meeting to interview those finalist candidates, and, and the full committee selects the final candidate. So that'll happen in subsequent weeks after next week, so just as an update there. Then, as far as negotiations go, I think we don't need to go into executive session, I'll just give you an update that we, we had our second training session for using the interest-based bargaining, used method for negotiations, and that went really well. And we come out of that with, we're going to come out of that, we come out of that with guidelines for the teams to work together on it, and it's essentially a project-based program where you present projects, the problems are, you work on as a project and solve the problems from using a project-based method to get through those things and then come to an agreement, you know, with both sides. And what we come out of that with was guidelines and a schedule, but we did finish up with the total schedule. Essentially, we're going to meet on the 10th, I think it's the 10th, the week from this coming Monday, for finalizing the schedule for both the parents and the teachers, and that's where that stands. Any questions on either of those? Yeah.
I don't know if you've answered, but how many candidates did we get for the superintendent position?
So there were, there was a, there was a blind screen that was done by MAC, and we had seven candidates through a blind screen.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a nice breadth of candidates to go through. That's good.
Any other questions? Okay. So next up is safety and wellness. Liz?
Hi, everyone. We haven't met since the last school committee meeting, and our next meeting will be on March 10 via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Liz at all? So after that, so Wakona building project, not much has changed. They are just about done with the repairs to the units, and they're working on fixing the building management system, the connection to the BMS, and that should be done, I think, this week or next. So we are getting to a point where we're going to move into sending a letter to fire and bar to hopefully get compensation for the, for what went wrong, and hopefully that goes through pretty smoothly, so we'll see what happens. Any questions on that? Okay, next up is the regional ad hoc, and David's not here, but he sent me a update that I'll just read to you. I mean, there's several RAC meetings that he's going around to the select boards, as he has told us he would. And there was some confusion as tonight's meeting, because he was, he was meeting with Covington Tonight, and, you know, he has to, and I understand, he has to post it because in case, you know, with several towns show up and then committee members show up, if you end up with a quorum of the RAC, you, you, you could be an OML violation. So that's why he's posting this, and there was some confusion. He's like, hey, which meeting do we go to? And I was glad to see you folks here. He's really just going up with some information gathering, you know, and he's got meetings, Covington on the 27th, you're tonight, Beckett on the 5th, Dalton on the 10th, Hinsdale on the 12th, Peru on the 17th, Washington on the 24th, and Windsor on the 31st. He's planning on meeting those, and essentially getting, you know, basically trying to gather information of what they think they need from us to get the RA approved this, this year. All future meetings, we posted as joint meetings, I just mentioned that, to avoid any OML issues. The RAC and school committee members to those, for those towns are encouraged to attend. All other school committee members are welcome to attend as well. RAC will meet again to review feedback from towns on any remaining issues, if any, and determine next steps. And I'm not Dave, so I can't answer questions, but maybe we can ask him later. Are there any questions on that, concerns about RAC? Okay, seeing none. All right. Next up is the superintendent ad hoc.
We're going to be meeting on Tuesday, March 25th at 7:00 PM via Zoom, so we'll have to report then.
Okay. All right. So with that, are there any old business? Any new business?
I should have mentioned this during my curriculum update, but for the ELA pilot at Wakona, Assistant Superintendent Hanol is looking for a school committee member to join the curriculum council, so if anybody's interested in joining that, please email or see Mike after the meeting tonight to see how you guys can get involved in helping to select the next ELA curriculum for the high school.
What does that entail? What's the commitment and what's needed?
I can send an email out to the full committee, the same one that I sent out to Curriculum Sub. It is typically five to six meetings that would be spanned between now and the end of this year, and it entails looking at the, right now, we've narrowed it down to four potential options based on the department, and so we'll be looking at the actual particular materials and then piloting and reviewing the feedback from the teachers on the pilot. The idea would be to select a full ninth and 10th grade pilot for next year, and we would pilot the, whichever curriculum we land on for one full year to make sure it's a good fit before we enter into a contract. But it is a commitment. I don't know, Barbara was on the last, the last one?
Yes.
Did I summarize it okay?
You did, yes. The meetings were, you know, well-run, and it was a lot of good information, and there were links to check things out online, which I did. So I wish I could do it, but I can't.
Are they during the day or the evening?
They're, they're early evening. We typically do it as close to after school as we can accommodate work schedules. We do typically have at least one parent or family member, and we have one family member who did sign up who is flexible in their scheduling, so we're looking to do it as close to after school as possible. But if somebody wanted to join, and we could do it at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock and make it work. But I'll send out the email to the full committee that I sent out to Curriculum Sub, and if you're interested, let me know. We're looking to get started within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any other new business? The old business? Remarks for the committee? Yeah.
I mentioned a while ago the concept of an energy manager position that is being funded by National Green, EverSource. Berkshire Regional Planning Commission put in an application for this position on behalf of Central Berkshire Regional School District and the towns of Hinsdale, Beckett, and Dalton. Joining this application are the towns of Williamstown and Lanesboro and there, and so just the Gray Lake School District, and the city of North Adams, just for their municipal buildings up for their schools. The application is in. They will make a decision about this in March. We are the only application from the Berkshires, and Ann Goby, who is Director of Rural Affairs for the state, hopefully is putting in a good word for us with the MACA folks, so we'll see what happens.
Right, please. Any else?
Rich, may I say something?
Sure.
Thanks. So this evening, MAC hosted a webinar regarding current financial policy, both at the current financial and policy issues at the state and federal level, and I was able to attend about half of that meeting. But something that Jason Fraser, who's the president, came out and really tried to push and reinforces the idea that people sending in their own real-life anecdotes to their legislators is something that helps get policies moved and get bills that are beneficial to our students and heard at the legislature, legislator level. And he just really encouraged everyone to reach out to your legislators for things that would benefit our own students, things like the rural schools bill or commenting on the sunsetting of the remote meetings, which will be at the end of March. So if everyone enjoys having the option to hybrid into these meetings, I would recommend you send an email along and try to get that to stick around for a little bit longer.
Good point, Liz. Thanks.
Thanks.
Not sure why that's going away, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
I think it's just statutory, and they extended it too, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do that again. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Motion in second. Roll call both, please.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Todd Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Ellen LaDazori?
Yes.
Elizabeth Lonsbury? John Mason?
Yes.
Stephen Marantz?
Yes.
Elizabeth Oaks?
Yes.
Yes. Rich Peters?
Yes.
Robert Ronzio?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Kimberly Weatherall?
Yes.
Okay. Motion adjourned.